Good morning, everyone. Thank you for bearing with us. The board chair had audio problems this morning, but thank you very much for your patience. And we welcome you this morning to the Beaverton School Board meeting for July 20th. And we will open up today's meeting with roll call first. If you could, I'll just call your name, or if you could just say your presence for the record, that would be great. And Brian?
Here, present.
Donna Kiner.
Present.
Eric Simpson.
Present.
Leanne Larson.
Present.
Susan Greenberg.
Present.
Vice Chair Tom Colette.
Present.
Board Chair Becky Timchuck, present. All right, we're all accounted for this morning on this beautiful summer day. First order of business, board members, at this time, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Chair Tim Chucker, I do. I would like to propose that we remove the items for the Soto and Vos design projects out of the consent agenda.
All right. Board member Brian has asked for, we pulled from the consent agenda, the items for both in Soto Elementary for the architect payment. And we will be discussing that at our August work session. Thank you so much. With that, I also would like to thank all of our committee members who submitted public comments. The public comment was opened last week and submitted online. I thank you for taking the time. We received 32 public comments. Each of our board members have received those written comments, and all of the public comments will be part of our board meeting minutes. Thank you so much for taking the time to share your thoughts with us. With that, we'll go right into our first report. And first up this morning is the return to school. And that is by reporting to us will be Dr. Brian Siega.
Thanks, Board Chair Tim Chucker, School Board Superintendent, and everyone watching today. I'm going to just take a moment to get set up. I'll be sharing my screen with you. Hopefully, you'll be able to see it fine. Please let me know if there's any details. And then we'll just go through an update for our return to school process. So I'm just going to mute myself and pull up my screen quickly. All right, thanks for bearing with me on that again. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Thanks for your time, participation, patience with this process. Just like to go into our update on how we're beginning to be ready to welcome our staff and students back to the 2020-2021 school year. So just a reminder that this is not a normal school year by any stretch of the imagination, including that we're not just talking about rolling up into the fall of 2020, that we're responding to the emergency closure that began March of last school year. We know that the closure exposed many inequities throughout our system, and that those inequities will be most felt by our students and families of color, as well as our students and families navigating poverty. With that, we know it is our responsibility to build an equitable response. And we know that that equitable response must be framed, keeping the safety of our staff and students at the forefront of all of our thinking and all of our processes. We're guided by guidance coming out of both the governor's office, as well as from the Oregon Health Authority, the Oregon Department of Education, and specifically to the Beaverton School District, the Washington County Department of Health and Human Services. The guidance that I was referring to is known, the document title is called Ready Schools, Safe Learners. And it's a co-authored document by the Oregon Health Authority and the Oregon Department of Education. The first draft of that was given to school districts on June 10th. There was an interversion, you know, an update given on June 30th, and that's the guidance that we're currently working under. We expect additional guidance to be published tomorrow, July 21st, and then maybe not a final, but another draft published on August 11th, both of this summer. And our teams will be working very hard to unpack and understand that guidance and adapt plans as necessary. To summarize the guidance, though, there's significant requirements when bringing students and staff back onto campus, and certainly in the areas of cleaning and disinfecting, certainly in the area of social distancing, hygiene, cohorting, and monitoring. And I just want to share a document with you that would well exceed my time for the agenda if we read through everything. But I also want to show you the steps that our teams are taking to make sure our schools are ready. So I'm going to share an additional document. So what this, this is a draft document that's being put together, led by our operations team in collaboration with leadership groups, both inside a school and throughout the department. But what this, what this document represents is the checklist or the actions that each school will need to take in order to be ready to open up for students and staff. And so I'm just going to kind of summarize the highlights for you. And again, as this goes into completion, we'll be happy to update the board as we, you know, complete this and get it more towards the final draft. But essentially, what schools will need to do is they'll need to put together a team, an in-person team, also including their executive administrators. And that team will be charged with making sure their schools are ready to reopen. Their team will also undergo simulations or walkthroughs prior to students and staff returning, where they'll be able to put their plans into practice and understand where their additional work needs to happen and understand how the different plans really go into practice when you're on the ground at the sites. So they need to begin by thinking exterior of campus. And when we think of that, we think of as students and staff arrive, how are the safety measures immediately put into place? One of the significant pieces is cohorting. And when I talk about cohorting throughout this presentation, what I mean is just a group of individuals that will interact with one another, still with social distancing in mind, but will interact with one another. But we will be doing as much as we can to limit the interactions between cohorts. So if everyone on this, you know, Zoom screen was one cohort, we'd be trying to build systems so that our cohort does not interact with other groups of staff and students throughout campus. As you go inside of the school, there's a few things that staff need to be thinking about and need to be making sure that they're arranging. One would be in our health rooms and what right now is being called an isolation room. And that's what steps do we need to take should a student or staff member come onto campus and begin to show symptoms? How is meal planning and meal service going to work? Keeping in mind that social distancing requirements that our cafeterias and our spaces were not set up for that. Circulation in the hallways, as we've seen in many retail stores, there's directional, there are ways to arrange your buildings to limit the amount of interactions between students, between students and staff, and really between each other. Moving through, as we look at the classroom design, just the quick rule of thumb that we have is that we know the average classroom in Beaverton is 900 square feet. And we're estimating approximately 75% of that space will be usable space. So if you take away kind of the idea of the furniture, et cetera, that's already in place, bookshelves that are already there, we feel that the average class size or the average space in a classroom will be right around that 700 square foot mark of usable space. The guidance from the Oregon Health Authority tells us we need 35 square feet per individual. And so that puts us right around that 19 mark of staff and students that could be inside one of our classrooms at any one time, which would still allow us to meet social distancing requirements. Again, as we continue to move through, there's a significant amount of work that, that schools will be doing to make sure that all safety protocols are met, all health requirements are met. One that I just like to highlight is, has come up in a lot of feedback to the board and feedback to the department is around the idea of masks. The district will be providing masks, face coverings for all employees, and we'll be asking employees to be wearing masks throughout their time in our buildings. Right now, current guidance from the Health Authority only lists student mask use as a recommendation. Though the governor did put out in a press release last week that, that there may be additional guidance coming out for that. So a little bit of to be determined on, on student mask use, though we are looking for, to guidance from the governor on that. But again, current guidance is recommendations for students. And again, we'll be following their guidance and looking towards future versions of the guidance as it may, it may change. So I'm going to take a second to move back over to the presentation. So as we think about welcoming students back onto campus, we will be utilizing the hybrid model for our first, first step back in from comprehensive, or from distance learning for all, which is what we're currently experiencing. Now, hybrid model means approximately half of our students will be able to be on campus at any one time and still meet social distancing, hygiene, and cohorting requirements. A very important point to all of this, though, instructionally in the hybrid model, is that all learning tasks still need to be thought of as delivered through that online experience. And the online experience for our younger students is a program called CSO. And our online experience for our older students is a program called Canvas. So the messaging, even though we are in a hybrid, which, which indicates, you know, some on-campus, some online and remote learning, is that we really do need our staff and students thinking about online learning five days a week. And that students will be expected to be engaging, being learning, and being learning that online situation five days a week with those. Again, and I'm going to show you in a minute, but at least two days a week of opportunities to come on campus to supplement that online learning. But the online experience has to be the focal point of the, of that hybrid model. Additionally, we are still planning on opening up the BSD Flex School to serve as a full online experience during, beginning with the fall of 2020, and being a permanent option school to add to the other option schools in the Beaverton School District. But big, big table here, meant to be, meant to be simplified. Essentially, this describes what access students will have to campus. If you look, the majority of our students will fall under Attendance Groups 1 or Attendance Groups 2. And essentially, Attendance Group 1 will be able to be on campus Monday and Tuesday and engage in remote learning Wednesday through Friday. Attendance Group 2 is just the opposite of that. Attendance Group 2 will be engaged in remote learning Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and have opportunities to be on campus Thursday and Friday. Significant note there, as you can see, the majority of students will not be on campus Wednesday. Wednesday will be, Wednesday will be designated from a student perspective as a remote learning and online-only opportunity that allows us to do a significant amount of work on our operations end and allows students, or excuse me, allows teachers to make sure that that online, online curriculum and online experience for their students is of the highest possible quality. As you look on this table for Attendance Groups 3 and 4, that most of the opportunities for 3 and 4 for those students that just will, will require the additional access and program requirements that need that additional access. So many of our emerging bilingual students, our students that are participating in our English language development programs, or our students participating in our special education programs, they will have increased access to school as the summary includes, and then as defined by, for our special education students is defined by their IEP or their individual education plan. So I wanted to just go through four talking points around why it's so important that we embrace and think about that online-first or remote-learning-first experience of the hybrid model. And I really want to highlight that I'm saying four, because essentially every other update I've given you, we've really only talked about three. And I just want to acknowledge and highlight that fourth one that you can see on your screen now. But the first reasoning, the first talking point behind this idea of online is that we need to take small steps back into welcoming all of our students back onto campus. We are not going to be able to be in a position to go from where we're at now, where everyone is completely fully remote, to jumping back into a fully on-campus experience. So this is just that first step in the progression. The second is by focusing on a robust online experience and a robust remote experience, this allows us to accommodate families who need that temporary, remote-only access, who don't yet feel comfortable returning to any kind of on-campus experience, or because of the requirements around COVID symptoms and COVID testing would be the terms used excluded from campus for, you know, a period of time. We don't want them to be missing out on our instructional opportunities. Three, this was, had been our initial talking point, was we need to be prepared to shift back into an online-only experience due to the nature of the virus and the way the virus is presenting itself across the state. And I guess I'll say unfortunately, that's why number four has come up. We need to be prepared that we are not able to open our campuses in a hybrid model. We need to be prepared that we may need to open our campuses in a comprehensive distance learning for all. And I'm going to go into that just a little bit more detail in the next couple of minutes. So I do think it's really important to highlight, though, when we say comprehensive distance learning, we're, we're talking about something different from distance learning for all, which was the spring of 2020. The spring of 2020's instructional system was based on an emergency closure that at one point we thought was going to be five days long, and then we thought was going to last into April, and then became the end of the semester. So that was done in, truly in some of the most unique times we've ever seen in public education. As we're ramping up to rethinking now how, how comprehensive distance education can be used in, as a solution to this virus that may be a longer-term situation that we're dealing with than maybe some of us initially thought. So some of the key differences is for our students, and this comes straight from the guidance from the Oregon Department of Education, is students will be given the opportunity for at least one, and the word they're throwing around is synchronous, or at least one real-time interaction between teachers and students per day. Not necessarily in every class, but at least one, and many times more than one opportunity for that real-time interaction per day. There's an average of four to five hours per day of instructional minutes. It depends a little bit on grade levels, a little bit less when you're down in the lower grades and a little bit more when you're up in the higher grades. A daily participation in each class is required. If you think about it using attendance, sort of how we typically do, it's not too tough to think about. It's just interacting with that either Canvas or CSO site twice will be counted for attendance. When we start talking about reports for average daily membership approaches, you know, approaches average, the weighted average daily membership, right, ADMW, those rules are still pending, but they're expected to come out soon. So we will have ways to account for student attendance. We do anticipate, or don't anticipate, I guess, we don't anticipate the department preventing us from offering letter grades. So we anticipate being able to offer letter grades throughout our system with what the department's calling a safeguarding student opportunity clause. And I think one of the things the board can expect is for us to talk about some temporary changes to the ARs, the administrative rules, internally around policy IK and how that deals with pass fail. So maybe having a more robust option for pass fail while still offering letter grades. But those types of things are still some of our current considerations. So those four key points are how comprehensive distance learning, how the learning that's going to happen in the fall and in, and into spring of 2020, 2020, 2021 school year will be significantly different from the experiences students had in the spring of 2020 or during that emergency closure. A couple of things that were, I just want to go through as I wrap this up, what we're currently thinking about. One of the pieces we're really trying to understand is how best to cohort students and staff. That's how do we arrange those small groups while still maintaining program integrity? This, the older our students get, the more of a challenge this is as the number of electives, the number of specific programs that students have, how they end up differing from one another. We are also still trying to understand what exclusion or quarantine rules will look like should a member of our student or staff community test positive. And we're just working closely with Washington County, working closely with the state to understand that and understand the impacts that our scheduling will have on that process. And then, of course, we're trying to accommodate what many people, and I'll say, including myself, consider this to be one of the heaviest lifts in public education, really in the history of public education, trying to maintain high-quality education, high-quality instruction through a global pandemic that continues to impact the lives of our staff, lives of our students, and the lives of our community. One piece that I know the board has heard a lot about, so I thought it would be worthwhile to take a moment or two to just give some talking points and hopefully to increase some understanding around the student schedule. This is, while conceptually being thought of at all levels, this is most significant right now at the high school level. And so what I have, you don't need to completely digest this table. It's just a hypothetical, hypothetical example of a student's current week. So pre-COVID, last, you know, I don't know, October, this is what a student's schedule may have looked like. And what you'll notice is, and this would have gone on for the entire year, a student would have kept mostly the same schedule for the entire year. Okay, so the idea would be that the student would see seven to eight different teachers a week. The student would have the opportunity to earn between three and a half and four credits, just sort of depends on the exact scenario. And this schedule really is what most external partners think school is going to look like. So when I say external partners, I mean Advanced Placement, AP College Board, so the AP programs, the IB, the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, and then our dual-credit partners. So really, the idea is it takes you a full year to get through your classes, to get through most of your classes, and you're taking each of your classes every other day. One thing that we are asking ourselves is, is this the ideal number of interactions for students and teachers? Is this something that increases or decreases the safety of our staff and students? And if we're opening in and if we're going to be focusing on that online experience, is seven or eight classes the right amount for us to be thinking about? Or does that possibly put too much strain and pressure on our staff and students? So a model that's been proposed, and I know that you've received a considerable amount of feedback on, is what is just collectively known as the four-by-four model. It, the, the table that you see is just meant to illustrate that staff and students would just have the same schedule every day. Instead of taking one set of classes Monday and a different set of classes Tuesday, you just take the same classes Monday through Friday. The result in that is that you, you get the same amount of instructional time in a semester for an individual class that you would in a year when you're alternating. So there's some benefits to that, and especially around student and staff safety, that it limits the number of people students and staff are interacting with. Instead of being involved with, like I said earlier, seven to eight classes for students, now you're interacting with four classes in a given week, four, four groups of students. Same, same for teachers, reducing the number of interactions they have. It also gives students and staff just less different things to think about. Again, that idea of just the same thing every day. Now, however, it doesn't go without significant challenges as well. One is there's a potential and a likelihood of a significant gap in schooling. The one that comes up the most, that's talked about the most, is the gap that would occur in math and in world languages. Though the gap would exist in all of our subject areas. And the idea would be that if you finish an entire course in first semester, you won't have that course in second semester. So you may go upwards of six months or even, even longer before having a similar class like that again. So that's a significant piece that's being considered. Additionally, again, this just doesn't align with our external partners. The testing in AP and IB, they're set currently on certain dates. As well as our dual-credit programs with, with some of our colleges and universities, some colleges and universities have adapted to similar approaches. However, some of our dual-credit partners have not changed as a result of the, have not changed their scheduling. So this schedule would not be conducive to certain dual-credit partnerships. So the other big consideration that the board, the community, needs to know that we are considering, obviously, we're considering along with districts around the country, as well as districts internally, is when will it be safe to open up as a hybrid? I certainly don't present this information as an epidemiologist. I'm certainly not, I'm not a public health official, I'm not a public health expert. But I do need, we do need everyone to understand that we are considering the information that we have. So as of this weekend, Washington County, which the vast majority of our schools in Beaverton are a part of, maybe even all, we have a, what's called, Harvard is calling a COVID risk factor of 8.5. When that reaches 10 is when stay-at-home orders are recommended. Washington County is also in Oregon's phased-in requirements, phase one, phase two, and eventually, hopefully, phase three. And we're currently meeting three of the five indicators. So obviously, that means we're not meeting two of the five. Again, I don't present that as policy, I only present that as pieces of information that we're concerned about and that we're tracking. The reason we're tracking it is that schools currently don't fall within the phased-in of the county rules. You know, gyms, restaurants, those, those types of pieces have specific language, but, but schools do not. So our actions are, we are meeting three, four times a week with representatives from the other school districts. We call it the big five, but sometimes it turns into the big five, big six, big seven, and those are just the most populated school districts in our state. Also, Governor Brown has convened what, what she's referring to as the Healthy Schools Reopening Council. And in her press release last week, she did suggest that, that council will be delivering more quantitative or more defined metrics for schools to be considering when, knowing when it is appropriate to bring students and staff back onto campus. So here's our next steps. We are anxiously awaiting tomorrow's guidance from, for Ready Schools, Safe Learners, the next, next update. Many of us will be receiving training in the afternoon, just shortly after that document goes public. We do think that after that guidance, we can, we can firmly set and we can work with our teachers and our teachers' representatives to make sure that we have defined not only the online remote experience for students, but the online, online and remote experience for staff. We do hope that we'll be able to soon understand the metrics for when we can open up schools with the hybrid model, when we can first approach that hybrid model. Again, when can we take that step into reopening our schools for staff and students? And again, what is a little bit like, one, what are the appropriate student and staff schedules for the 2020-2021 school year? So Board Chair Tim Chucker, School Board Superintendent Grady, I did my best to be within the 15-minute time on something that's taking the vast majority of our staff's time. And before I take questions, I do just want to acknowledge all the work that's being done, not only throughout our schools, but throughout the district, working in partnerships, our operations team, trying to make sure that we are able to provide the educational experience that our students deserve while making sure that the safety of students and staff stays at the forefront. So I'm happy to take any questions. I'm also happy to take questions offline, because I know this agenda is already much longer than your July meeting is. But thanks so much for your time, thanks for listening again. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Well, thank you, Brian, very much. And, and we do appreciate all the time, all, all the time principals, all the time our teachers are giving to allow us to educate our students but do it in a safe manner. And we know many more decisions are going to have to be made, but thank you for your great presentation. Are there any questions from board members?
Yes, I was wondering, I know we really don't know what's going to happen, because things are slowly evolving. So I'm assuming then that we probably won't know what it's going to look like until right before school opens. How much, how are you going to be communicating to parents and, and students as to what model we will be recommending based upon what the science says and where we are as a county?
Yeah, Donna, great question. I think a few things to think about are when, when is the information going to be released? And some of it is trying to understand what tomorrow's guidance looks like. Do they give us concrete answers? However, I also know that our superintendent or superintendent's cabinet, working in cooperation with the other districts, is looking to make some of those decisions with the information we have in the most timely manner. I know our communications and community involvement team are working on an updated version of our, of our community Q and A, or excuse me, our community FAQ, resulting from a lot of the questions that came up at last week's sessions. So I apologize, not a very specific answer, other than very cognizant of the need to get information out to community members. Right now, we, community members know that they need to be planning on at least three days of online instruction to start the year and need to be planning what, need to be ready to pivot to that. And Donna, it looks like you're ready to jump in right there, so I'll, I'll yield to you as well.
Yeah, so I have, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Donna, I'll try to be a little bit more specific. I think that there's some, there are some school districts that were, they were able to have a meeting with the governor last Thursday. And we expressed our concerns regarding the significant increase in the number of positive cases in Oregon, specifically in the metro area. And I think on, by July 27th, which is next Monday, I believe we're going to be coming out with some guidance for all of our communities in these districts, primarily around in the metropolitan area, talking about starting in comprehensive distance learning. And I think there, what we're really asking for, it goes to some of those metrics that Brian put up. We would really like some guidance on metrics, whether it is going from a phase, to a, to a particular phase, which would allow our students to come back, because really, our most primary concern is the safety of our students and staff members. And so And so, uh, bottom line, I believe on July twenty seventh, there should be some, uh, comprehensive communication going out to our communities, parents, students, and, uh, entire community.
Well, I guess as a follow-up question, I'm just kind of curious about, uh, as far as the, I know we're, we're sort of touched upon the four by four model, but I'm kind of curious as to, is this something that other large districts are considering such as Portland Public Schools, Salem Kaiser? What's Tiger Tewolotin doing? I don't exactly know, I haven't really been following that.
Uh, the answer is yes, I know what some of them are doing, and I think, um, in that July twenty seventh, uh, communication that, there'll be some guidance regarding that, specifically here in Beaverton. Uh, our, our schools, I think we have probably the majority of our comprehensive schools, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, uh, would like to start out with the four by four, however, um, when you get into some of our schools that, um, are doing IB and AP, there are some, there are some drawbacks, and there are some positives and negatives with each, with each, uh, model. And so we're trying to, as a cabinet, digging in and looking at that, uh, and the other districts uh, have not come out exactly, I would say a majority of them are looking at more of a, uh, the four by four model, but also trying to consider how to accommodate some of their schools that, uh, are doing IB and AP.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anne?
Yeah, I, I'm looking forward to, and I know, uh, I guess I'll just start by saying, like, of course we have questions because this is a very uncertain time. And we know that the, we won't have the answers to all the questions. I participated in the question, Q and A sessions that we had with, uh, families last week and appreciated the amount of enthusiasm from families as well as uh, the amount of answers that we actually were able to give at those. Um, and I, I think my hope is that people are starting to understand that we are looking at an online first model, um, where we expect to be primarily leading with online instruction next year with in-class opportunities, sort of as a bonus. I'm curious, uh, if people are trying to fully understanding that, particularly if we're going to have guidance on July twenty seventh. And then we have, uh, my understanding is flex closing for its application process before that. And I know that there's a lot of uncertainty for teachers in terms of staffing and for students in terms of their activities and their, uh, coursework options and what those are going to be, I'm just, uh, it's not a question so much as a, I hope that we take on our best flexible selves at that phase as well. And so I, recognizing that, you know, as much certainty as we can convey is also going to be important so that people understand what things are firm, we're going to be able to grab on to and which things, you know, we're just going to have to be flexible to make sure that we keep people safe.
Yeah, thanks, Anne, great, great comments, appreciate, appreciate those thoughts.
Board members, any other?
Yeah, I have a question, and, you know, um, thank you for all the work, and I know there's so many open questions that either we're going to get some answers tomorrow or on July twenty seventh. But this is more about the flex. And I'm, and this may have been asked last week during the thing, but how are kids that are on free and reduced lunch going to get their meals to them if they're doing completely online? I just want to make sure that, I mean, uh, you know, along with the kids that are coming into school during the hybrid, I know they're getting their food, like, given to them at that point, but I was trying to figure out the flex kids.
Susan, that's a great question, um, I'm not sure we have the exact staff to answer, let me, I'm going to answer it though, the, the guidance does include, and Beaverton School District certainly is including all students in the opportunity to receive the lunches, including our BSD Flex students. The, the, the mechanism for how that works yet, um, will lean on our Nutrition Services Department to, to develop that and to communicate that out. But our Flex students will be included in the nutrition planning.
Susan, this is Dawn, and I think, and I'll ask Josh to come on and, uh, correct me, but it was my understanding the last time that we talked was that folks that were doing, uh, Flex would be able to, I believe, collect, uh, their five days of food at one time, I believe that's what Charity, our, uh, Director of Nutrition Services said, but there's definitely, they've talked about it and there is a vehicle and a mechanism for those students to have access to food every day. Josh, I don't know if I got, got it pretty right, or?
You, you do, Dawn, and, and subject to change, Susan, but that's the plan that we have. It'll be part of the plan and we'll, we'll include them in, uh, as we develop that moving forward.
All right, any other questions from the board? Well, we know there's going to be a lot of information and our, we appreciate the staff, the communication staff. We'll be getting out more frequently out of questions. We know all of our families, each one, we're trying to do the best for our families, and each one of our situations are different, but we do have forty-one thousand kids in our school district, and, uh, everyone's needs are different and every family is going to have to make the best decisions, uh, for their family, and a lot of times the decisions are not easy because we don't get, we can't meet everybody's needs all at the, at the same time, but I appreciate the staff trying to, um, think through and we'll continue to work with our families and can, continue to communicate, uh, information as soon as we know it. And we just appreciate everyone's, um, patience and, and, and hard work. Um, with that, we're going to move on to action items. And, uh, first up is the approval of Bond Accountability Committee members. And Eric Simpson, you're going to walk us through that process?
Yeah, we, um, we ended up getting like six very good applicants for the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. Um, all these applicants had great construction experience, uh, project management experience and architecture. And, um, but we only really had a spot for three more to supplement our committee to bring it to nine. So, um, we have a recommendation for Bradley Wright, for Sean Kukarny, and David Remus to, uh, join the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. They all had a wealth of construction experience and architectural experience. And we'll think they'll be immediate contributors to make sure that we, we continue what we've been doing with the committee to scrutinize projects and to get the best results, so that's my recommendation, if there's any questions.
Okay, um, and, um, is there, uh, any, uh, motion?
I, I move I move that we approve the, uh, Bond Accountability Committee members.
Second.
Right, so properly moved and seconded, so we approved the bond committee, uh, members, I was gonna, I didn't know which one, um, um, that, uh, we, uh, were going to need for, uh, on the discussion. So we will, uh, have the discussion, um, is there any discussion on any of these members?
I just want to thank them, it was great to have such qualified applicants.
Agreed, I thought that our pool is amazingly qualified, so I'm thrilled that these committee, uh, community members were willing to step up.
All right, with that, we'll call the question, I will read each, uh, member's, uh, name, and if you can just signify by saying aye, nay, or abstain. Anne, Brian?
Aye.
Donna Tiner?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Leanne Larson?
Aye.
Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Uh, with that, the motion passes seven to zero. I was so excited about getting to action items that I forgot a very important step here, uh, on the agenda, and thank you guys for all keeping me honest here and online. So, uh, we need to go back up to a discussion item. Uh, and David, it's not that I was trying to ignore you at all, um, I want to, I get, because we have a very important, uh, discussion item here with the first reading of a board policy, so, David?
Yeah, thank you, just trying to keep the long-winded people off screen, I suppose. Uh, so you have in your packet a proposed change to board policy LBE related to charter schools. So the state law allows school districts to place a stop loss on the number of students that enroll in online charter schools outside of the district. So as you know, Beaverton School District resident students can choose to enroll in a number of online charter schools that are sponsored by districts other than the Beaverton School District. The, the notable one is, uh, Oregon Connections Academy. Another significant one for some of our students is the Baker Web Academy. Um, they do not need our permission to enroll in those, it's, it's, um, under charter school law, you can enroll in a non resident charter school without, um, without permission. A number of years ago, the legislature put a stop loss in there that districts could implement, uh, a three percent cap. So at the point at which three percent of Beaverton resident students are enrolling in any number of online charter schools, so not three percent in an individual school, but collectively three percent in online charter schools, we could begin to deny admission or deny exit of Beaverton students to those schools. Again, a way of recognizing, um, a stop loss, uh, for districts. It does require that we have language and policy about how we calculate that three percent as well as, uh, the inclusion of the statutory provision that students could appeal that decision to the, the, uh, State Board of Education. So the language, uh, in front of you today is exactly that, it implements that. Just as a slight background piece, so coming into, uh, coming into this, uh, summer, we had five hundred and eighty-two students enrolled in online charter schools outside of the district. We, um, the cap at three percent, as John Bridges calculated, would allow for thirteen hundred and seventy-eight students to enroll in online charter schools outside of the district before we could deny, uh, their, uh, admission. We've also since, uh, June one, we've had two hundred and seventy-six requests for enrollment or intent to enroll in online charter schools in addition to the five eighty-two that already were. So at eight fifty-eight, there is still capacity for enrollment outside the district in online charter schools before we would hit that three percent cap. And I think we're obviously also very optimistic about the BSD Flex program coming online and its ability to recruit and retain students who would otherwise depart the district for a hundred percent virtual environment, um, long-term, not just in the face of the current, um, current pandemic, uh, ahead of us. Uh, would that be happy to answer any questions you may have?
All right, any questions? Um, I, I will say that this was, uh, language that was proposed by the Oregon School Board Association that came to us in the fall, this is all, we've already, we've always had a policy, we just did not define all of the ways in which we, uh, established the cap. So this just better defines what we already had as, as policy. And, um, Anne and I had a chance to, uh, also look at this as part of the back to school, uh, part of the whole package of what we're looking at with, with back to school, so, um, we will be voting on this a little bit later, but unless there's any other questions or discussion now? All right, thank you very much, David, we'll, we'll get back to this a little bit later. Okay, returning to action items. Uh, next up is the approval of an addendum to the superintendent's, uh, contract. And you all received this language, and this was, we, as you recall, we were, um, revised and approved the superintendent's contract, uh, back in November. Um, and there is, this is no additional language or anything, it was just when that process was done, uh, there was just, uh, this part that was left out, and so because the contract was already, uh, signed, we just needed to make sure that it was up to date and properly, um, put into the contract. So are there any questions about the, uh, addendum?
Chair Tim Chuck, I move that we, uh, approve the addendum to the superintendent's contract.
Second.
So properly moved and seconded that we approved the addendum to the superintendent's contract, is there any discussion? With none, we will call the roll. Anne, Brian?
Aye.
Donna Tiner?
Aye.
Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Leanne Larson?
Aye.
Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Aye.
And Chair Tim Chuck votes aye as well, with that, the motion passes seven to zero. All right, next up, um, is the consent agenda, and before we, uh, get to the consent agenda, we just want to make sure that the, uh, folks know that there are a couple of, uh, additions, edits to the, uh, consent agenda. One comes under the board meeting minutes, there was a word left out, and, uh, our board secretary Diana has, has made, has made that change to the minutes, and that will be reflected in our new minutes. And also under, uh, contracts, one of the contracts, there was, um, um, Tom, do you want to, do you want to?
The contract for the Serendipity Center listed in the recommendation that we engage in a contract with Providence Health Center, which is incorrect because the Serendipity Center is its own entity. So that's changed so that, uh, when we prove it on, approve it on the consent agenda, that we are not, um, providing the district with the wrong recommendation.
So, so both of those changes have been made to properly reflect in the actual board book. But, uh, when we, um, accept the motion for the consent agenda, we will do so with the, uh, amendments.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
With the
With the, uh, mentioned, above-mentioned changes.
I second that as well.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda with the edits and amendments. So, uh, with that, we will call the, the roll. Uh, Anne, Brian?
Aye.
Donna says aye.
All right, Eric Simpson?
Aye.
Leanne Larson?
Aye.
Susan Greenberg?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tom Colette?
Aye.
And Chair Tim Chuck votes aye, with that, the consent agenda is approved, seven to zero. And a part of that consent agenda was approving the new board policy LPE. So, uh, with that, we are done, uh, with, uh, today's business, I thank you very much with, uh, usually our July meeting is, uh, very quick, but because we have so much important business in the district, I appreciate the staff all being on board and board members all being here in our community, um, I know that they're all looking for, um, information, so we appreciate taking the time to join us this morning. So with that, we are adjourned, and our next, uh, regular, uh, business board meeting will be a work session which will happen on Monday, August tenth. So with that, we are adjourned, thank you.